Twenty-two Planning Commission hearing. My name is George Alcaraz. I'm the vice chair of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission, filling in for our chairman, Jack Wall, who will not be here today. Before we get started, I've asked Commissioner Costin to lead us in prayer and Mr. Horsley for the pledge.
Eternal God, I follow. We thank you for this glorious day which you have made. God, we praise you because you are God, and you are God alone. God, we ask that you would watch over us. God, and that you would give us your wisdom today, God, as we discuss the issues of city business. God, we do not want to act on our own wisdom, but God, we ask that you would give us wisdom. God, let us ever be mindful that you are our protector, you are our wisdom, you are our peace, and we thank you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
With peace on me with the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, in the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Thank you. I asked Commissioner Redmond if he could introduce the planning commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, or Acting Chairman, or no words. I'm going to start on the right side of the day is here. I will make a mistake, so bear with me. All the way at the end there is Kay Wilson. She is a deputy city attorney for many years. I mean that in a positive way. In many years, she has guided us, the commission and the whole city in land use matters, keeps us out of the jailhouse. That gentleman next to her is Michael Clemmons. He serves the Centerville District, and he is a professor of political science at Norfolk State University.
Old Dominion.
Old Dominion. I told you I was going to make a mistake. Holly Quayar. Holly Quayar serves at large. She is a consultant. We've got to come up with a better term than that. That just doesn't tell us enough. In any event, that's what she says. She is a consultant. John Costin here. To my right, he serves at large. He is a retired fire captain in the city. I'm Dave Redmond. I serve the Bayside District, and I am a commercial real estate broker licensed in Virginia, North Carolina. This is Donald Horsley. He is a farmer. He serves at large at well. He is our longest tenured member. He said yesterday, we were here, I think, that he served on Planning Commission on and off since nineteen eighty-six, which is when I graduated from college. So he's got a lot going for him. In the middle there, acting as chairman, he is normally our vice chairman. He is our vice chairman, but he's acting as chairman today, is George Alcaraz. George professionally, first, he represents the Beach District. Professionally, he wears many hats. He is an events promoter. He's a restaurateur. He's a contractor. He does a whole bunch of things. Just to, just next to him is also someone who is a Swiss Army knife professionally, and that is Dee Oliver. She's an author. She's in the funeral home business. She, I think this is your ninth year, Dee, here, and she is a former vice chairman and a former chairman of the commission. She serves at large. Further down there, that's David Weiner, the guy wearing the glasses. He represents the Kempsville District. He is a commercial salesman in the building industry. That is, next to him is David, it's a different day, as we can't see people as well, so bear with me. Sitting next to him is David Bradley. David represents the Princess Anne District, and he is a retired budget director for the city of Virginia Beach. Finally, on the end, last but never least, is Barry Frankenfield. Barry is retired from city service. He was also formerly a planning director with Virginia Beach, and he represents the Lynn Haven District. That fellow all the way on the end is Bobby Tahan. He is our planning director. He has a very fine, very able, hardworking staff, and he's going to take a minute to introduce some of those folks. Mr. Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Redmond. Clerk, in your day, we have Pam Sandloop and Madison Harris. Starting with the planning administration team, we have Carolyn Smith, our planning administrator, Waddell, Marshall Coleman, as well as Hannah Sabo, our zoning administrator. We also have Levi Luckenbach, Garrett Hannigan, Michaela McKenney, Elizabeth Noack, as well as Rick Lohman with the City Public Works Traffic Engineering, and we have Toy Eisenberg with the City Attorney's Office.
You left Sadie out. You left Sadie out.
Oh, I'm sorry. And we do have Sadie McNaughton, who is our, who is interning for us, and this is her last meeting with us today, as she starts at Women Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Tahan, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you both. Next, I'd like to ask the clerk to describe the rules and order of business for today's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, excuse me. The Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the commission with respect and civility. We request that cell phones be put on silent during this meeting. Following is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the Planning Commission Agenda. The Order of Business for this public hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent Agenda. Second Order of Business is a consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believed are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. Regular Agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Today, we will have both in-person speakers and speakers participating via WebEx. When an agenda item has been called, we will recognize the applicant or their representative first. Following the applicant or their representative, in-person speakers will be called next, and then the speakers participating via WebEx. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak unless they are solely representing a large group, such as a civic league or homeowners association, in which they will have ten minutes. Please note that the actions taken by the commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the city council. The commission thanks you for your attendance, and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next order of business is for the consideration of requests to withdraw and defer an item. All those wanting to withdraw, please come forward. You state your name and which item you're.
My name's Les Watson. I represent the applicants on items five, six, and seven, and we're requesting a thirty-day deferral, if that's the pleasure of the commission. We're working on the final, out the final details of some matters with the Navy regarding their easement on this property.
All right. Thank you. We were doing deferrals, I mean withdrawals, and we'll do, we'll go ahead and move here. Is there a?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move, move for deferring items five, six, and seven for thirty days.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes, I made a motion, and Mr. Horsley made the second.
I'll have a button to push. Wait, wait.
Thank you for bearing with us.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
You may want to ask if there's any, anyone in the audience that was here to speak on it, just to cover your bases.
Thank you. Is there anyone that'd like to have any opposition to defer in these items? Or speak on it? All right. Thank you.
There's no button pushing.
Okay. If there's a time, we're going to call verbal vote. If you can just respond, aye, nay, or abstain, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
And just to clarify, we're voting on items five, six, and seven to be deferred for thirty days. I understand Mr. Bradley's aye. Mr. Clemmons?
Aye.
Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Ms. Quayar?
Aye.
Mr. Frankenfield?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley was our second. Ms. Oliver?
Aye.
Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Mr. Weiner made the motion. Vice Chair Alcaraz?
Aye.
By a vote of ten in favor, zero against, agenda items five, six, and seven have been deferred for thirty days.
Thank you. Is there a representative for item number twenty-one? If not, there is a request for withdrawal of item number twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for a withdrawal of item twenty-one.
All right. Have, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Quayar.
Do you have the ability?
I'm sorry. I need to ask, is there any objection for this being withdrawn? Our speakers. None. Thank you.
Hold on a second. Do you want to, did I do something wrong?
Okay. I'm going to once again call for verbal votes. This is for agenda item number twenty-one to be withdrawn. Motion by Mr. Weiner and second by Ms. Quayar. Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Clemmons?
Aye.
Mr. Costin?
Aye.
Mr. Frankenfield?
Aye.
Mr. Horsley?
Aye.
Ms. Oliver?
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Mr. Redmond?
Aye.
Mr. Alcaraz?
Aye.
By a vote of ten in favor, zero against, agenda item number twenty-one has been withdrawn.
You good?
We're good.
Okay. We're moving on to the consent. Mr. Weiner, if you could take it from here.
Thank you, sir. Today, we have fifteen items on a consent agenda. The first one is item number one. Mrs. Sabo would, is coming up to present this for the, it's a, an ordinance to add section two fifty, two fifty-one, two fifty-two, two fifty-three, and two fifty-four to the city zoning ordinance pertaining to lighting requirements.
Thank you. As referenced, this ordinance adds a number of sections to the city zoning ordinance pertaining to lighting requirements. It was sponsored by Councilmember Henley. The purpose of this amendment is to provide for outdoor lighting that is necessary for safety, enjoyment, and commerce, as well as protecting neighbors, the environment, and drivers from non-vehicular light sources. There are a number of definitions that are added to the ordinance as part of this amendment, including a definition for full cutoff, which is a type of light to which no light is emitted at or above the horizontal plane drawn through the lowest emitting portion of the light. Another definition is foot candle, which is a unit of light density that would land on a plane, and that is, can be measured with a light meter, and that is one of the units that is referenced in the ordinance. The lighting is exempt from this ordinance. There's a number of different lighting types, including lighting for public monuments, the safety lighting for the FAA, lighting required by the police department, and then other types of lighting for emergency conditions. Certain types of lighting are prohibited in the ordinance, including lights which imitate any official highway or traffic control light or signage. Any lighting that's in the public right-of-way does require an encroachment agreement or council approval. Searchlights or other high-intensity lights are permitted only when used by the federal Commonwealth or other city authorities. And then lighting, types of special spectral emissions, or different special lighting types and colors, are not permitted. Lighting sources should be color-corrected types, such as halogen LEDs or metal halide. Outdoor lighting requirements, we have a limit on the foot candles that, of lighting that would be on a property line. So we do have a maximum of point five, all the way up to five foot candles, depending on what the adjacent property use is. And some examples of foot candles in areas around Virginia Beach, including on the boardwalk and at town center. And then on Virginia Boulevard, and showing some examples of car dealerships. The ordinance also limits, has height requirements for lighting fixtures. Again, depending on its proximity to residential or apartment district, ranging from fourteen feet, if it's within fifty feet of a residential or apartment district, and then as you move farther away from a residential or apartment district, the allowed lighting fixture height does go up. Commercial parking areas within twenty feet of a single-family residential dwelling or single-family residential property line are limited to a Ballard site-style lighting with full cutoffs and no taller than four feet in height. Additional outdoor lighting requirements, all lighting fixtures must be full cutoff features, as referenced in the definitions. Floodlights, however, do not need to be full cutoffs if they're used in single-family, in conjunction with a single-family use. Additionally, wall packs on the exteriors of buildings need to be fully shielded and aimed at least forty-five degrees from the horizontal, either up or down. Landscape lighting can be, must be forward throw fixtures aimed at the interior of the property. And then sports and performance arenas need to provide an existing, provide a glare control package. We are requiring a photometric plan for all site plans with proposed lighting and for discretionary applications, except for those for single-family dwellings. And then inspections with light meter readings. And again, this is an ordinance to add sections two fifty, two fifty-one, two fifty-two, two fifty-three, and two fifty-four to the city zoning ordinance.
Great. Thank you. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda?
Mr. Vice Chair, there's no opposition, however. Mr. Burdon would like to make comment.
Thank you. I'll make a, just a quick comment. A lot of work went into this. I understand that, and I'm not, not in any way expressing opposition to what's being done. I do have a concern. I expressed this to Sabo a couple of months ago. Section two fifty-two, C four, prohibiting light fixtures in the public right-of-way. First of all, there's no definition of a light fixture or a landscape lighting. Both of those terms are in here, as well as lighting, but there are, in especially the northern part of the city, and some degree down south, scores, if not thousands, of landscape lighting, ground-level lighting, trees, and other, you know, amenities, whatever, that are in the right-of-way in front of people's homes. We have a lot of roads that are, you know, some are fifty feet wide in right-of-way, some are sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety at the north end, that have small twenty-foot roads on, especially improved roads, especially waterfront areas, et cetera. And there are loads and loads of people who have very attractive landscape lighting that is technically in the city right-of-way. And the idea that everyone's going to have to then go in for an encroachment, it takes, for what I consider real encroachments, at least six months to get on a council agenda. And I just don't know if this is going to be able to be implemented in an effective way that isn't going to annoy a whole lot of people if it's enforced. So that, I just think standards might be a better way to deal with that landscape lighting in the right-of-way in front of people's homes, because there's a ton of it out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. The next one on the consent agenda is item number four.
Item four? I'm sorry to interrupt. Just technically, my battery's dead.
Mine's dying, by the way.
Sorry. Can't vote. Okay. Item number four, T F J G Canopy, a conditional rezoning of eight twelve apartment district, conditional B four mixed-use district at fourteen thirteen Alaskan Road. Yes, sir. Mr. Beeman?
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. For the record, my name is Rob Beeman, local land use attorney with the Troutman Pepper Law Firm, here on behalf of the applicant. We've had a chance to read the conditions. They're acceptable, and we appreciate being on consent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Mrs. Oliver has graciously volunteered to read this one into the record.
Great. Thank you. This request was deferred at the July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Planning Commission public hearing at the applicant's request. Since the deferral, the applicant provided the staff with a revised concept plan that included the addition of a six thousand square foot building at the corner of Alaskan Road and Woodward Drive for a restaurant. The applicant is proposing to rezone the parcel to a B four mixed-use district, the redevelopment of the property with up to a hundred and thirty-two multifamily dwelling units, fifty thousand square feet of office space, ten thousand square feet of destination retail, and fifteen thousand square feet of restaurant. The proposal meets the requirements of the redevelopment per section of eighteen oh four D of the AQ's regulations in the zoning ordinance. There are many outdoor minimums are planned that may include pedestrian trails, grilling stations. Specific details will be finalized during the final site real, plan review process. Also indicated on the proffer plan is an outdoor swimming pool, as well as clubhouse with a fitness center. And in addition, the rooftop parking structure will be covered with a green roof to create an additional amenity for the office and residential use, users. This property contains one point three seven acres of wetlands and is adjacent to a tributary of the Linkhorn Bay. The proposed stormwater management strategy includes collection and infiltration of stormwater focused along the southern edge of the property. The staff recommends approval of the rezoning of this application. The commission agrees with staff, and therefore, we put it on the consent agenda. But I do want to just add one thing, that this, and I'm sure everybody's aware of, this piece of property's been sitting vacant since we moved Linkhorn Park Elementary School. And it has become a terrible eyesore to our area and just to our city overall. This development is going to be such a great asset to our city, and I just am thankful that they have raised the bar to this level, and I look forward to seeing it. So with that, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mrs. Oliver. The next one is item number eight. Frank A. Zinglas and James T. Cromwell for a street closure at, portion at, between Seventy-sixth Street. Is there a representative? There he is.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. For the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney, representing the applicants, the Zinglas and Mr. Cromwell. We appreciate the good work that Marshall did on this application. All the conditions, all four of them are acceptable to us. I do want to point out one thing, and I mentioned this to Marshall. On the summary of the proposal, the first bullet point, the last sentence states that the owners of the duplex, the owners of the duplex at two oh two and two oh four Seventy-sixth Street have relinquished their rights to purchase their half of this lane. The owners of that duplex support this application, and they have no desire at all to purchase the western half of the lane. They didn't purchase the lane behind them when we closed that a year and a half ago. But because the underlying fee is not owned by the city, but by the receiver for shore realty, they actually don't have the right to purchase the lane. In other words, if they did, we'd have to get a deed from them of that right if the city owned the alley. So I just want to be just clear that they support totally our acquiring it, but because the city doesn't own the underlying fee in the alley, they're, they don't have a quote-unquote "right" to acquire it, because I don't want anybody to get up to city council and say, where's the, yeah, where's the deed? Where's the contract? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burdon. Is there any opposition to this being placed on a consent agenda? Hearing none. We've asked Ms. Quayar to read this into the record, please.
Thank you very much. This applicant is requesting to close a portion of the unimproved lane that is adjacent to the rear lot line of the single-family dwelling at two hundred seventy-sixth Street, as well as adjacent to the side lot line of the duplex at two oh two and two oh four Seventy-sixth Street. On September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, the city council approved the closure of a portion of the southern half of this lane adjacent to lots eight, nine, ten, forty-six, and the southern fifteen feet of lot eleven. Seeing that there's no opposition, staff recommend, and the commission recommends approval with subject to conditions and to have this on the consent agenda.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is item number nine. Mike Daubert, Back Bay Farms, for conditional use permit for assembly use at eighteen thirty-three Princess Anne Road. Is there a representative for this item? Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Daubert.
And I'm Megan Daubert.
Great. Are all the conditions acceptable?
We do.
Okay. Great. Thank you. You can have a seat.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Anybody having any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Mr. Bradley's been asked to read this into the record.
The applicant has signed a fifty-year ground lease agreement and intends to develop and operate an event menu, venue on a three-acre portion of eighteen thirty-three Princess Anne Road, also known as Back Bay Farms. The property is zoned AG two agricultural district, which allows for assembly use with a conditional use permit. Specifically, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for assembly use to host weddings and other events on the site. The planning staff has recommended this item, and since there's no speakers against it, we are putting it on our consent agenda.
Great. Thank you, sir. Next is item number ten. Jenny Corporation for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor in two thousand and twenty-nine Lynn Haven Parkway, or Lynn Haven Parkway. Is there a representative for this item? Hi. Please come forward. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Mahun Wing. I'm representative for Jenny Corporation.
Okay.
For permanent eyebrow makeup.
Okay. And all the conditions are acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Mr. Frankenfield has graciously volunteered for this one.
All right. Thank you, sir. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the addition of permanent makeup, known as microblading, to a list of services at this location. The salon is located at the Salem Crossing Center. Permanent makeup services will be provided by appointment only. The applicant tends to have one permanent makeup artist operating in the salon. There's no new signage or other exterior alterations. There are no other tattoo parlors within six hundred foot radius. This meets all the requirements for a tattoo parlor, and there's no opposition, so we recommend consent.
Thank you, sir. Next one is items eleven and twelve together, which is America Real Estate Company for a conditional use permit for truck, trailer rentals, and mini warehouse on thirty-four twenty-seven Holland Road. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Tyler Rosé with the law firm Williams Mullen, here on behalf of the applicant. We've reviewed the conditions, and they're acceptable to the applicant.
Great. Thank you, sir. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? None. Mr. Frankenfield has.
Okay. Well, thank you again.
Please, thank you.
And the applicant plans to develop a new U-Haul moving and storage store on an undeveloped four point four acre parcel. The applicant is requesting two conditional use permits, one for mini warehouse and one for truck and trailer rentals. The applicant will construct two warehouse buildings, build a, one will be eighty-nine thousand square feet, the other nineteen thousand square feet. Both warehouses building will be no longer, no higher than thirty-five feet tall. There will be the required buffers, providing screening along the property lines and adjacent to the Boli Apartments. A display area for truck, trailer rentals will be located on the north property line, and the U-Haul storage will have a minimum of ten employees to a shift. U-Haul may authorize customers with storage units to access the site via access cards. Finding no opposition to this development and working closely with staff for the plan, we recommend consent.
Thank you, sir. Next is item number thirteen. Ocean Condominium Developers for modification of conditions to non-conforming use on four four thirty-fourth Street. Welcome back.
Thank you again, Chairman, members of the commission, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney, representing the applicant. We want to thank Elizabeth Noack and Carolyn Smith for their work on this application with my clients. All the conditions as recommended by staff in the handout that you all received are acceptable, my client. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Mr. Costin, to read this into the record, please.
Thank you, sir. This seven thousand square foot undeveloped lot is located in Seapine Station, an area identified in the comprehensive plan with recommended design guidelines. Seapine Station is characterized by a mix of early twentieth-century buildings and modern infill and redevelopment. Lots that were developed prior to the adoption of Virginia Beach zoning ordinance have certain vested buildable rights, and this lot is one of them. Prior to two thousand and thirteen, two mid-twentieth-century buildings were located here, which had a total of six dwelling units. In November of two thousand and thirteen, a proposal to remove these structures and replace them with a development with four dwelling units was approved by city council as a modification to a non-conformatory, as the six existing units existed legally non-conforming, and the proposed four units exceeded the maximum density provision for properties in the eight twelve apartment district. Though the original structures were demolished in anticipation of that development, the replaced buildings with the four units were never constructed. Today, this applicant is proposing to modify specifically conditions one and four of the Today, this applicant is proposing to modify specifically conditions 1 and 4 of the 2013 approval. Condition 1 refers to the design concept and layout of previous, of the previous proposal. The applicant is proposing four dwelling units, uh, and then condition 4 intends to address design inconsistencies within drawings that had accompanied the previous application. This condition is no longer needed with the new proposal. The staff has recommended approval and the, uh, commission confirms, concurs, therefore we have placed this on the consent agenda.
Great. Thank you, sir. Next one is item number 14 and 15. Reed Enterprises and Virginia Corporation Liberty Transmission, Transmissions for modification of proffers and a conditional use permit for automobile garage at 3401 Holland Road. Mr. Burdon.
Thank you. For the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach attorney, representing the applicant. Appreciate this being on the consent agenda. It was already on it once, and city council approved it on consent. I want to thank Ms. Eisenberg because she caught the fact that, uh, the dummy who's standing here, we, we incorporate, Reed Enterprises, who have represented for years with Maryland Corporation, and about nine months ago, he sold his last Maryland property. We changed it to a Virginia Corporation, and to keep it straight, we changed the name to Incorporated One, and then we filed the application using the old name. So, sorry for that. I'm sorry for the, for everybody's, wasting everybody's time, and thank you, Tori. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, best Mr. Bradley to read this into the record, please.
The requests for a modification of proffers and conditional use permit were previously heard and recommended for approval by planning commission on May 11th, 2022, and approved by city council on June 7th, 2022. Following these actions, it was discovered that the proffer agreement advertising in public notice had identified the incorrect property owner. These requests are being resubmitted to planning commission and city council to correct the property owner name. Aside from this correction, the nature and scope of the proposals remain unchanged. Staff recommended this. There's no opposition, so we're putting it on our consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. Next one is items 16 and 17. World Famous BHS Incorporated, our conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor and body piercing establishment at 2980 Virginia Beach Boulevard. Is there a representative? Please come forward, sir. Please state your name for the record.
How you doing? My name's Chris Bowman.
Are all the conditions acceptable?
They are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, uh, is any, is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, best Mrs. Quayor to read this into the record, please.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor and body piercing establishment within exist, within an existing 6,480-square-foot building. The building is located along Virginia Beach Boulevard on property zone B2, Community Business District. Having no opposition, staff, uh, staff agrees and the commission concurs to put this on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next one is, well, there's items 18 and 19, which is World Famous Oceana BHS, for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor and body piercing establishment at 1375 Oceana Boulevard. Got a state and name, please.
Chris Bowman.
All, uh, conditions acceptable?
They are.
Thank you, sir.
I'm just very excited.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, best Mr. Redmond to read this into the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. This is an application for, um, uh, two conditional use permits, one for, uh, body piercing, one for tattoos at 1375 Oceana Boulevard. If you're familiar with this property, it's just right outside of Oceana Naval Air Station. The, um, the AQ's, uh, noise is greater than 75 decibels. Uh, it's inappropriate use for this property. There is no opposition, of which we are aware. The staff has recommended, uh, approval, um, and, uh, the commission, uh, therefore places it on consent, and congratulations, I'm glad you're excited about it.
Thank you, Mr. Redmond. Um, next item is item number 20. T-Mobile, the applicant, City of Virginia Beach property owner, for a conditional use permit for a, for a communication tower at 2068 Landstown Centerway. Is there, now, the applicant bell, there we go? Please state your name for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioner C. Forehand, representing T-Mobile.
Okay, and all the, and everything's acceptable, conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, best Mr. Horsley to read this into the record, please.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Section 232 of the city zoning ordinance regulates communi, communication towers. The ordinance favors the use of public property such as, uh, cell, I mean, uh, power poles for the installation of these towers, as long as they don't create, uh, any public safety hazards. And this property is located on city property, this tower is located on city property. It's, uh, some 170 feet from the nearest property line and 6/10 of a mile from the nearest residential neighborhood. There's a need for, uh, more cell usage in this area, so, uh, the staff recommended approval and the commission agreed and put it on the consent agenda, seeing as we had no opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horsley. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that is the end of the, um, consent agenda. I move for approval items number 1, 4, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20. All right, thank you, Mr. Weiner. I, I'm taking that's your motion to approve those items. Thank you. Is there a second? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Hit the button. Done.
Mr. Horsley made a second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I need to make a disclosure. Actually, you need to make two disclosures.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna. Um, hearing the second, are there any planning commissioners abstaining any of these consent agendas, items?
Um, I want to make two disclosures. Uh, number one, I should have disclosed earlier when we, um, had the application withdrawn. For some time, I abstained on, um, short-term rental, uh, applications and ordinances because I had a client in the travel industry. I no longer have that client, um, and so I am withdrawing the letter or at least withdrawing my, my abstention from those items and henceforth will be, uh, will be voting on, on those items. I second, uh, would also like to mention that agenda, item number 10, Jenny Corporation, um, is applying, uh, at a shopping center, uh, in, uh, at Salem Crossing Shopping Center, which is leased by a colleague of mine at my place of business. Um, I don't receive any kind of remuneration or have anything to do with that piece of business, so, uh, I may, I merely make that disclosure. I will be, uh, voting, um, in favor of that and the rest of the consent agenda. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Redmond, thank you. Is there any other steps? Go ahead. All good. Oh, you don't have? All right, uh, pursuant to the state and local government conflict of interest, I make the following declaration. I'm executing this written disclosure in hand regarding the planning commission's discussion on vote number 13, Ocean Condominium Developers LLC, 404 34th Street. I'm employed by the previous owner of this property, and though there may not be, uh, they're not the owners of this application, I believe that I have a financial or personal interest in this transaction. As such, I've made a disclosure and I will be abstaining from this application. Thank you. All right. We have a first, a second.
Okay. So it's open. Hi, vote is ten in favor. Zero against. Mr. Alvarez, agenda item number 13. Agenda item number one, four, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. And all be recommended for approval.
Thank you. If you had an application that was on the consent agenda, your request will now be scheduled for an upcoming city council meeting. Staff will contact you about the date. For those applicants on the consent agenda, thank you for your participation, and you may remain in the meeting if you'd like. Uh, at this time, we're going to go ahead and move to the regular meeting. Madam Clerk.
Okay, our next agenda item is agenda item number two. Dam Neck Associates LLC. It's an application for a modification of proffers on property located at 872 Dam Neck Road in District 5, formerly the Princess Anne District. Would the representative please step to the podium?
Mr. Vice Chair, members of the commission, for the record, Rob Beaman, local, uh, real estate attorney, here today on behalf of the applicant. Um, as Juan mentioned during the informal session this morning, the property that's subject to this application has been zoned for multifamily residential use since back in 1994, subject to a series of proffer conditions. We're not proposing to increase the density of this development at all. We're just proposing to modify the site plan and the building elevations in order to respond to current site conditions, including the need to avoid, uh, wetlands and floodplain, and also the need to enlarge the stormwater facilities on-site to meet current codes. All the other proffers from the 1994 rezoning, including those that would require, uh, the provision of on-site amenities, enhanced pedestrian connectivities, and, uh, gateway treatments at the site entrances, would remain in place. And with that, we thank you for your, your time and consideration. This application, we'll stand by for questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Are there any speakers?
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Vice. Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, we have four that have registered. They're all WebEx. Calling Mary Panulo, fought, to be followed by Alicia Alonso, Ms. Mary Panulo.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. Um, I am a resident of the town hall at Waddon at Wellington Dam Neck, right across the road from where this proposed development is set to be built. And I'm here with the president of our, um, HOA, Joanne Little, and there are a whole lot of folks in our community who are very concerned about this development for 600-plus apartments in a residential area that already has a lot of traffic issues. Um, namely, uh, you know, there's a lot of traffic going down to the Dam Neck base, and there's a lot of traffic and traffic accidents at Upton Drive and Old Dam Neck, which is right near the Kidd Academy, preschool school. So, we're just trying to understand where the wisdom is in building a 614-unit apartment building when traffic already seems to be pretty unmanageable, when schools in the area seem to be at full capacity, and when our understanding was because of wetlands and because of the Navy needing this area as a drop zone, nothing was going to be developed So we just want to understand what the plan is, primarily to uphold, um, you know, some sort of traffic regulation. What's the plan? Hello?
Yes, we hear you. If you could just, uh, state your case and, uh, we'll tend to that at the end of this, uh, okay?
Okay, my name is Joanne Little. I was also registered, but I, I'm having a difficult time, so we're, I'm using Mary Panulo's, um, computer. And those are also my concerns, and also, uh, the school across the street, which will be across from those apartments, there are, they are at full capacity, and there's already a line going out to Dam Neck every day for drop-off and, and pickup. There's a line going down Upton every day for the same thing, uh, coming out of our complexes. It's all, we're told, when they built the academy across the street, that there was going to be, there was going to, a light was going to be placed that was never placed. Uh, Upton Drive is the thoroughfare to, there would be the road to go down to Walmart, Home Depot, and all that, so that's going to increase, and that's a residential neighborhood. Um, so, yeah, that's the thing, we're just, um, wondering what the plan was. We were also told that, I, I saw a plan, uh, about a year or two ago, where it was going to look like a, a farmers market, um, residential, single-family homes, uh, some rush, uh, uh, in terms of this huge apartment complex. So is this just like the first phase of this plan? Because if they're also going to include single-family homes, that's just going to increase the, it's going to increase the, the student population of the schools. So, yeah, we'd like to just have some more information as to what exactly is, is going on and has, um, and that it is, there are wetlands there, and I know in, in other areas of the city, when the Army Corps of Engineers have told the city not to build on the wetlands, they still built close to the wetlands, and homeowners of those, of that property have, are having, have had difficulty because the property was built close to wetlands. So, so, yeah, if we could just get some idea what's, uh, this is all, all came up as a mail as to what they were building there.
Well, thank you. What we'll do is, uh, during the rebuttal, the representative will answer those questions for you. Is there any questions for the speakers?
Yes, uh, I just want to make sure that, that the lady on the, uh, WebEx was, is familiar with what the current zoning is on the property, which has been, been in effect since 1994. And, um, it was zoned A-12, and then it was to A-18, which allows 612 apartments. That's been in effect for some time. But, and then in, uh, two, 2004, the, uh, size of the parcel was actually changed, so, so, um, I'm, I'm not sure she's really in tune to what, what the current use is of the property that it, it could have been developed with these number apartments for some time, some time ago, so just want to make that point plain.
Thank you, Mr. Horsley. Is any more questions for the WebEx? All right, Madam Clerk, that was two of them, so we have two more.
Yes, sir. Alicia Alonso.
Morning, everybody. I think I, I am part also of the group in Wellington Dam Neck, and I, what I believe that the main concern in here is, uh, lack of information to the surrounding areas. Um, all the questions that my fellow, uh, neighbor, uh, just stated are still unanswered. So, what is the plan to inform and involve the community in understanding our capacity to serve these new residents that are going to be just across us? I think this is the challenging here. Communication, I will definitely, I am very interested in learning more, but I don't think I have an, anything in my hands right now, uh, to, to even elaborate informed, uh, questions, but I, all the questions are, what is our capacity? Can we serve these people? How are we going to organize ourselves? How our lives are going to change from now on? To park my car, to have more people resident, residing in the area? So, so, yeah, it's communication what I would like to, to address. What's the plan of communication to the neighbors?
Okay, thank you. Again, we'll let the representative, if you do not hear that, then you can please contact the, the planning department's office and see if you can get those answers.
Our final speaker is Stephanie Middleton. It appears we don't have Ms. Middleton online for WebEx at this time. Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay, thank you. Representative would like to come forward? Feel free to rebut.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Again, for the record, Rob Beaman, local land use attorney with the Troutman Pepper Law Firm, here today on behalf of the applicant. Um, just to, to answer some of those concerns, as Mr. Horsley pointed out, this site has been zoned for multifamily residential for some time now, and we're not proposing any sort of increase in, in density on the site. As per the staff report, the, um, the surrounding traffic network is currently under capacity, and then also the schools are under capacity as well, so there's no issue of overcrowding the schools. And I'm happy to reach out after the hearing to Ms. Pinello and her, and her association as well to provide some additional information and, and have a conversation with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, is there any questions? All right, hearing none, we'll go into open session for discussion or entertain a motion. Yes, Mr. Horsley, go ahead.
I make a motion that application be approved, and I would like to encourage Mr. Beaman to get out, and evidently these folks are not as well-informed as they need to be. Thank you.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Hit your button there, Mr. Horsley. Second was Mr. Redmond. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So could we, um, have the contact information?
By a vote of ten in favor, zero against, agenda item number two has been recommended for approval.
All right, thank you. Do you want to address, um, Mr. Tahan? Any concerns of getting information?
Uh, as for the citizens that are on the line, uh, the applicant will be reaching out to you, um, getting the head nod from him. We also have your information, and we will share that with you, uh, with them, so they can reach out directly.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Yes, sir. Our final agenda item is agenda item number three. Joyce Nelson, Shelley Grace Whitezer, and Suzanne Gray, an application for conditional rezoning, conditional B2 Community Business District to conditional AG2 Agricultural District on property located at 2748 West Landing Road. forty-eight West Landing Road, Council District Two, formerly the Princess Anne District.
Thank you, Pam. Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Vice Chairman, serving as chairman, members of the Commission, for the record, Eddie Bergon, Virginia Beach attorney, representing the family members who are the applicants here. This is absolutely, as Ms. Wilson, I think, mentioned this morning in the informal, it's the first ever in Virginia Beach and likely the first ever in the Commonwealth of Virginia, a proffered restricted downzoning from B two Commercial District to A G two Agricultural District. This family has owned this property since before the, this particular lot, or six-point-six acre parcel was created fifty-five-plus years ago. They simply are asking to return the property to the same agricultural zoning district that all of the surrounding properties for miles around are zoned, subject to a very limited number of permitted uses in that ag district, all of which are compatible with the surrounding rural residential uses at the end of West Landing Road. The conditional rezoning will have the effect of vacating proffers associated with a spot zoning of the parcel to B two Commercial in nineteen ninety-seven, and negating the conditional use permit for a boat storage yard, commercial boat launch, and a bait shack. That was approved with a conditional rezoning in nineteen ninety-seven as the only permitted use of the property. No dockage was allowed in the water, no jet skis were allowed to be docked or stored in the storage yard, and no preparation of food was allowed in the bait shack. The nineteen ninety-seven rezoning was generally supported by the neighboring property owners, again, at the end of West Landing Road. However, it was spot zoning, and while the use survived for a number of years, it turned out not to be viable as so strictly restricted and not financially sustainable. And also, a lot of the residents at the end of West Landing Road grew to dislike the boat, the boat, that boat storage yard. There are twelve rural residences at the end of the road with this property, including a thirteenth upon which a house will be built directly adjacent to this property on the west side, for which Planning Commission City Council approved a variance to make the lot legal that had been done by deed many years ago, that thirteenth house, and that was within the last twelve months. The neighbors down here are all supportive. I've given you all a petition. There's no opposition of any of them at the end of the road. Returning the property zoning to A G two is consistent with the applicable provisions of our city's comprehensive land use plan for this area, and it removes the potential that it might be asserted that the existing B two zoning opens the door for introduction of new or modified commercial uses of the property. We have now proffered, in addition, a number of principal uses that are more intense, such as childcare, education centers, churches, religious uses, elementary schools, and many others that would be not appropriate, even though they're allowed in agriculture. They're removed. Because this site is uniquely and unquestionably rural, located well below the blue line in our agricultural zone southern half, at the end of a narrow, winding, dark-at-night portion of this old rural road, there is no viable commercial use, and no water and sewer, by the way, no viable commercial use in the B two zoning district that could be viable financially, environmentally desirable, and compatible with the surrounding use of the surrounding properties. There simply is no other potentially permissible use of this property in the B two zoning district that is recommended for the area under our city's comprehensive land use plan, that is compatible with the use of the surrounding properties, as soon to be thirteen rural residential homes, not including this, and that is environmentally compatible and is financially feasible and sustainable. This is true regardless of whether the use is compatible or incompatible with ACUs. That is the reason and the standard that we have, Section eight oh four A, of our zoning ordinance. I was around when that was, on the committee when this was all done, and Section eight oh four A is actually in there, not to, for downzoning. Nobody ever participated in downzoning to agriculture. It was to permit upzoning. Upzoning in areas that are residential that cannot be, that the agricultural use isn't feasible, and it cannot be, you know, you can't put industrial, you can't put other uses there. Excuse me. The, again, Article eighteen, that section was adopted following the BRAC MOU process over eight years after this property was conditionally rezoned, in order to regulate the manner, in a manner consistent with the rights of individual property owners and the requirements of military operations at NAS Oceana, development of uses and structures that are incompatible with NAS Oceana. The reasonable use exception for incompatible uses in this area contemplates a zoning change, as I said, which would permit an upzoning to greater density. Attempting to revise the proffers attached to the B two zoning is clearly inconsistent with the comp plan and basic land use law, and zoning principles are clearly not, and it's not feasible. The same is true with respect to attempting to rezone the property for any other economically viable use in any other district other than agriculture. Conversely, downzoning the property back to agriculture, like every other property which surrounds this property, within a very, very substantial surrounding land area, and you've seen it on the handout, I've shown, you know, there's nothing else around it other than these houses, and open space, nothing but open land, that cannot be conceivably deemed to be unreasonable, especially when we can upzone and have upzoned. I'm aware, I've done five or six, four on Dam Neck Road, couple down east of here on Princess Anne Road, in areas where everything is residential and there's nothing else to do but residential. And those upzonings under this Section eight oh four A, excuse me, are densities from one-point-three units to three units per acre. The most recent one, Atlantic Development, just east of Atlantic Shores on the south, north side of Dam Neck Road. That's what this is there for. The idea that we can't downzone property to fit with everything else around it under that section is, in my opinion, ludicrous. The, the one home built on this six-point-six acre parcel created in nineteen sixty-seven, it downzoned, to suggest that that is not reasonable in this location, surrounded by other houses, is to suggest that it would not have been unreasonable to leave the other properties zoned agriculture and let them put a pig farm there. I mean, you can't have it both ways. So, that's, and I even spoke to Bill McCauley about this, because he drafted this. No one ever even anticipated something like this happening. So, it is a completely unique circumstance. This family is paying real estate taxes on a commercially zoned B two property that is not feasible to develop. They've been trying to sell it for years. So, this, we're three-point-two-three miles away from Fentress and at a ninety-degree angle to the side, not in either runway, in the normal flight pattern. We're not even close to a crash zone. And between the runway and this property, again, perpendicular to it, there are scores of houses. They're in Chesapeake, but there's scores of them. So, the idea that, and this piece of property can absolutely be a house built on it, it's no lower than the other twelve, soon to be thirteen, houses at the end of West Landing Road. So, it is frustrating to us to have this recommendation the way it is, but it's, I've been around this whole situation, the whole time, on the committee back in, in the early two thousands when this was adopted, and it was adopted to permit upzoning from ag to residential. It was never conceived that it would be needed to do a downzoning with proffers, to make sure that we didn't put the wrong use in the wrong place. And that's exactly what this would be if it isn't this. You know, to try to suggest that we can make the marina bigger, do something to make it work, no one down there wants that, nor should it have to, because it was a spot zoning, arguably shouldn't have been approved in the first place. Lastly, you all approved the case right after this, this morning on consent, where it belongs. That's a great development of the old elementary school on Laskin Road. The city owns that piece of property. And yes, it is zoned, it has been zoned, for apartments. Well, up until a few years ago, anyone in the private sector coming in, and this under our earlier interpretation of the ACUs ordinance, would have had to have given up some properties, some residential incompatible, in order to get all that additional commercial and restaurant and office space that's in that application. It's a good application. I represent some people who bid on that property as well, and I told them at the time, I don't know how the city's going to handle this, but they need to be consistent, in my view. And again, it's, it's an excellent application, but you all recommend, and staff recommended that be approved where they're about a hundred yards from APZ one. Okay? And I realize it's a heavily developed area. It's in a higher noise zone than this one, and that was approved on consent. And these poor folks, staff's against them having a house at one, it works out to one unit per less than a sixth, less than one-sixth unit per acre. And that's how, I mean, six-point-six acres with one house, when we're, excuse me, they've already used the same section to approve one-point-three eight units per acre to three, three, three-point-two units per acre in other upzonings using the same provision that have taken place over the course of the existence of that provision, which is there for a very good reason. But you cannot distinguish those from this in terms of the land use policy. Does it fit? Is it the most, is it compatible with what's around it? It's exactly the same standard that I've quoted, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Bergon. Is there any questions?
Thank you.
Any speakers?
No, sir. No speakers.
Okay. We'll open for discussion then, or I'll take a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make them, well, let me make a comment first. I've been around a long time. I don't think I've ever known any property to be from, be downzoned from B two or any other upzoning down to agriculture. It's kind of one of, one of very unique situations that I've never seen, that I, it may have happened, but I don't know, I don't remember it, so. But anyway, I think this is probably, you know, and I'm not sure about it, but it's probably some heirs that have been hered to this property and need to be able to settle this estate out, and, and they were inherited a piece of business, business-owned property that they can't really get a business on to be functional, and all they want to do is downzone it to agriculture so they can probably build one home on it. And, and I really don't see a problem with that. I think, I think it's fine to do that. They've probably been paying business taxes on it for many, many years, and I can, I can understand that. So, that being said, I would make a motion that we approve this application.
All right, thank you, Mr. Horsley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Redmond. Yes, did you have a comment?
I guess I have a comment done, just because it's, if you approve it as is, it's denied. Is that right? Am I reading it right? Or did I?
No, but I would ask a question if I could, Chairman Alcaraz. Mr. Horsley. Sorry. Mr. Horsley, that would include your belief that there is no other reasonable use of this property than as residential, correct?
That's definitely true. There's no other reasonable use of this property. Been sitting at zone B two for many years and no taker, so it's got to go back to agriculture.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Redmond. You have a comment?
Yeah, I want to just sort of piggyback on what Mr. Horsley said. I don't think it's sufficient to just throw out a potential use. Because it's a butt, it's a body of water, doesn't mean it can necessarily be a marina with a four-hundred, you know, square-foot retail establishment and all that. You reasonably say that about any property in Virginia Beach if that were the case. For it to be reasonable, in my view, it'd have to be a very plausible business plan. It's something that would be very likely to work, that someone could have great confidence that they weren't, you know, burying money into the ground, and none of that has been done, or is possible to be done, I think, in this situation. So, I think merely throwing out an example of, of a potential use that's adjacent to a body of water does not, in my view, constitute a reasonable use. And like Mr. Horsley, I would therefore view the fact that it's been this way for many, many, many years as prima facie evidence that there is no reasonable use of this property. So, I mean, and I genuinely believe that meets the legal standard, regardless of what, you know, Mr. Bergon argues was misapplied. Even under this standard, it seems to me, you know, we're well past the bounds of reasonableness. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bradley, you had a comment?
Sure. Yeah, I think, I just want to explain where my vote will be. I talked about it a little bit in informal session. You know, twenty years ago, there was the real, very real chance that we were going to lose Oceana through a BRAC process. And my department at the time, I was in the budget, actually did a fiscal impact study to show what the loss would mean to the economy. And the city and state spent tens of millions of dollars to actually reduce the density around Oceana. So, with the city's intent, and this seemed to be kind of a line drawn in the sand, I think this would be a very easy issue without that ACUs parameter in play. So, I'm going to support the staff's position on this one.
All right, thank you. Ms. Oliver?
So, Mrs. Wilson, I just want to, the staff's report is to deny. So, how do we go about?
So, just to clarify, that is the staff's position, but if you, if you, the motion is to approve the application, so that is to approve the conditional rezoning.
Okay.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Horsley, a second by Mr. Weiner, to approve the application.
So, we're voting for it?
For it.
Okay.
Vote is open.
This is a vote for yes.
Whatever you want.
By a vote of eight in favor and two against, agenda item number three has been recommended for approval.
Can we see the results? Thank you. All right. It passed. Thank you for your participation in the planning commission hearing today. I appreciate it, and thanks for bearing with us on this high-tech technology here in front of us. Meeting's adjourned.